I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission regular meeting of June 19th, 2025 to order at 7:28 PM. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Our official roll call. I'm here, Ms. Kalal, I believe is not. Mr. Lisk, I believe it's your turn to sit, if you wouldn't mind. Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Jett Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Susko? Not here tonight. Ms. Yuhas?
Yes.
Always here. Mr. Maholland? Ms. LaRocque? And our ex officio, Ms. Hardy's here. Well, it looks like we have kind of a full house, so thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We'll begin with our public hearing. We have an application of William R. Sweeney, Esquire, agent for Sahin Development Group, LLC, for proposed text amendment to Section 9.2.3, 9.3.1, to permit mixed-use development in the CB zone, subject to special permit, with additional controls in Section 25.5 of the Eastline zoning regulations. And if we could start by reading Mr. Maholland's memo?
Memo to Eastline Zoning Commission. I don't think it's on. Is it on? Okay. Date, June 17th, 2025, proposed text amendment, mixed-use CB zone. The applicant attorney, William Sweeney, has submitted a zoning regulation text amendment to amend Sections 9.2.3 and 9.3.1 to permit mixed-use development in the CB zone, subject to a special permit and controls in Section 25.5. Because this is a text amendment, state statute requires application referrals to certain state and local agencies for comments. These are the Connecticut DEEP and the regional and local planning organizations. The comments will read into the record later in the evening. As the commission is aware, when the board reviews a text amendment and is acting in its legislative capacity, which authorizes it to adopt regulations when, in its view, such action is in the best interest of the community. Any approval must be in keeping with a comprehensive plan like zoning regulation map. The applicant is specifically proposing to amend the previously noted sections of the zoning code to allow more flexible mixed-use regulations. Presently, Section 9.2.3 permits mixed-use development by special permit for existing buildings only. Subject to additional controls in Section 25.5, table of minimum controls as section states. Number one, second-floor residential units over existing first-floor commercial uses and existing building. Number two, square footage to be no greater than the existing first-floor plan area. Number three, second-floor residential units may be added as a new second-floor addition existing one-story building.
Four, marking in accordance with Section 22. Five, height per Section 9. Six, subject to Section 34 architectural design review. Seven, municipal water and sewer must be provided. These controls allow for upper-floor additions consisting of residential uses above existing buildings in the CB zone. The applicant's proposal would permit mixed-use on lots of 20,000 square feet or more for new development. Any project would be subject to additional controls proposed per Section 25.5. These controls address site plan, traffic, architectural design review, lot size, residential unit location, parking, building height, water and sewer, and building size along with other requirements. In conclusion, the commission should carefully evaluate the proposal to ensure it is in the best interest of the Niantic Village CB zoning district. The board should also consider whether there are sufficient controls in the proposal and whether the architectural design control in Section 34, combined with the proposal, will provide significant oversight for future redevelopment projects.
Thank you. Would someone like to read the memo from CCOG?
Sure. Go ahead. April 11th, 2025, Anne Thurlow, Chairman of Zoning Commission, Town of Eastline, went away Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut. Chairman Thurlow, I am writing in response to a request for an intermunicipal referral for the Town of Eastline. The application was received on March 27th. The application was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3A of the Connecticut General Statute. The proposed regulation amendment seeks to permit mixed-use development in the CB zone, subject to special permit, with additional controls in Section 25.5 of the Eastline zoning regulations. Based on the review of the material provided, I determine that the proposed zoning regulation amendment is not likely to have a negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please call me at 475-328-1727. Sincerely, Dan Robinson.
Next, we have a memo from DEEP.
Eastline Zoning Commission, William Maholland, zoning official, zoning department, Town of Eastline. Brief review of proposed zoning text amendments for mixed-use Sections 9.2.3, 9.3.1, and 25.5. Dear commissioners, thank you for referring the above referenced zoning text amendments for our review and comment, proposed by the applicant Sahin Development Group, LLC. Acting as the commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the proposed zoning text amendments for consistency with the policies and standards of the Coastal, Connecticut Coastal Management Act, and we have the following comments for your consideration. The proposed zoning text amendment will revise the existing zoning sections that pertain to mixed-use land uses within CB districts, specifically Sections 9.2.3, 9.3.1, and 25.5. We note that there are sites within the CB districts that contain coastal flood hazard areas and where resident land uses are not currently allowed, in particular, if new construction happens to be proposed. Section 22A, 92B, 2F of the CCMA requires coastal hazard areas to be managed so as to ensure that development proceeds in such a manner that hazards to life and property are minimized. The proposed amendments would potentially increase the development of high-density housing within the CB commercial district, which raises concerns regarding the potential to increase hazards to life and property during flood events, if applied to sites that are located within FEMA-designated special flood hazard areas. For example, the proposed amendment called for eliminating the restriction in Section 9.2.3, allowing mixed uses only in existing buildings, which would allow this use through the CB district within new construction. Limiting mixed uses to existing buildings could also limit residential density, but allowing mixed uses in newly constructed buildings could potentially increase density. The proposed text amendment to Section 9.3.1 would remove the restriction of lot size, which could also allow for higher density of residential units. The Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, based on their research, recommends future planning to consider that sea level will be up to 20 inches higher in the national tidal realm in Long Island Sound by 2050. Sea level rise in Connecticut, finally, for January 2019. Severe storm events are expected to increase with climate change and with them, flood risks increase as well. Potential, but permanent coastal management, planning, development, and zoning recognizes the potential hazards of each coastal site and avoids locating uses and facing people, especially vulnerable populations that might be difficult to evacuate in predictable, life-threatening hazardous conditions. Thus, this potential for increased residential type density on lots delineated within the SFHAs within the zoning district. Proposed, taken into consideration when reviewing these zoning amendments so as to minimize danger and destruction of life and property. Accordingly, to ensure consistency with Section 22A, 92B, 2F of the CCMA, we strongly encourage the commission to consider adding language to the proposed amendments that will limit the application of said text amendments to parcels that are located outside of FEMA-mapped coastal zones, hazard areas, and known flood-prone areas within CB districts, unless it can be adequately demonstrated that dry egress and access for first responders can be provided during storm events. Please be advised that this consistency determination is based on coastal management considerations only and does not necessarily reflect other municipal planning and zoning considerations that may apply. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Section 22A 104E of the Connecticut General Statutes, which requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency with the policies of Section 22A 92 and the criteria of Section 22A 102B of the CCMA. Should you have any questions regarding this, please feel free to contact me. Karen Michaels, D.A., DEEP, Land and Water Resources Division.
Thank you. And would anybody like to read the memo from the Eastline Planning Commission?
To Eastline, Planning Commission, William Maholland, zoning official, from Gary Geshel, Director of Planning, Wetlands Enforcement Officer, dated June 10th, 2025, zoning referrals, CGS-83A, application of Willia, Willia R. Sweeney?
William.
I know, but it says Willia, doesn't it?
It says.
Okay. Let me make sure I'm reading right. Agent for Sahin Development Group, LLC, for a proposed text amendment to Section 9.2.3, 9.3.1, to permit mixed-use development in the CB zone, subject to special permit in Section 25.5 of the Eastline zoning regulations. Upon review of the above referenced zoning referral with a 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development, I have the following comments. The proposed application would permit mixed-use development within the CB commercial business zoning district, subject to the controls of a special permit. Those controls consist of the following. Development greater than 15,000 square foot and end-floor area must provide a traffic study. Architectural plans must be prepared by a licensed architect and reflect New England village character. Minimum lot size 20,000 square feet, residential density 2,000 square feet per unit. In the previous iteration, the number of bedrooms could not exceed two and require minimum floor areas as follows. Efficiency 500 square feet, one bedroom 650 square feet, two bedroom 850 square feet. However, the current iteration of the proposed text eliminates the minimum floor plan area requirement. Residential units may be located on the first floor of any building but may not front or have direct egress along any public street. Parking shall be provided as required by all commercial and residential uses in accordance with Section 22 and may utilize the shared parking provision of Section 22.5 and 22.7, providing that all parking required be provided upon or directly fronting on the subject parcel. Building height shall not exceed two stories and shall be in accordance with Section 9, with the exception of the zoning commission may permit architectural features to extend no more than 10 feet above the 30 feet maximum building height. The site must be on municipal water and sewer. Landscape and lighting must be consistent with the New England village character. All mixed-use development must be designed as walkable and pedestrian-oriented and promote safe connections to Niantic Village. No individual building shall exceed 20,000 square feet in gross floor area. However, covered parking will not be included in this calculation. And finally, the gross floor area of the commercial use shall occupy no less than 30% of the total gross floor area of the mixed-use development. For new construction, residential use shall not occupy more than 50% of the first floor of any building. Findings, based upon my analysis of consistency with the 2020 POCD, Section 9.6, Recommendation 3A, recommends encouraging a range of mixed land uses and commercial zones and along state collector roads. In addition, it also recommends taking advantage of existing infrastructure by encouraging adaptive reuse of buildings and sites. Section 9.6, Recommendation Number 5, recommends promoting comparable, compatible businesses in appropriate locations for foster local employment and opportunities, a favorable tax base, the provision of goods and services for local residents. Therefore, it is moved that the Eastline Planning Commission find the proposed text amendment reference above consistent with the Eastline POCD, 2020 POC, Plan of Conservation and Development, based on the findings in the memorandum from Gary Geshel, Director of Planning, dated May 13th, 2025, and hereby offer the following comments and recommendations. That's it? Yeah. Is that blank? Is that very supposed to be blank?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Attorney Sweeney, would you like to present?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney at the law firm of Toban Carberry in New London, and it's great to be back here tonight. I'm appearing on behalf of the Sahin Development Group, LLC, which is a Connecticut limited liability company, and is also the owner of property located at the intersection of Main Street and High Avenue in Niantic. On behalf of my client, as you know, I've submitted an application for a zoning regulation text amendment seeking to amend Sections 9.2.3, 9.3.1, and 25.5 of the Eastline zoning regulations to permit mixed-use development within new buildings in the CB zone, subject to special permit and certain minimum controls. Joining me tonight in the audience, I have Nick Sahin. He's the principal of Sahin Development Group. As this, as this application involves a change to your zoning regulations, as Mr. Maholland's report indicated, you sit in your legislative capacity tonight, and you're charged by state statute to consider the proposal's consistency with the POCD and your comprehensive plan for zoning, which is your regulations and your map read together. Further, you have a choice of approving the proposal before you tonight, denying it, or, a lot of commissions forget this, you also have the ability to tweak it and to modify it, and then approve the proposal with those modifications. Last year, my client began exploring the feasibility of developing a new mixed-use building along Main Street in Niantic, with commercial frontage on the first floor and market-rate residential units behind and above that space. Unfortunately, as the commission, I think, is aware, mixed-use development within new buildings in the CB zone is not currently permitted. And that's, and really, mixed-use development is limited only to existing buildings. That wasn't always the case, however, as the allowance for new construction involving mixed-use development was removed from the zoning regulations several years ago. We understand, talking with Mr. Maholland, that when that decision was made, the commission noted that this was an issue that needed to be revisited in the future and likely with new regulations. We met with Mr. Maholland last year, and we discussed some options to move the project forward in light of the current prohibition, including submitting an 830-G application for the project, to have affordable housing. However, at the end of the day, that's not something that Mr. Sahin wants to pursue, and we really didn't want to go down that path. The vision was a market-rate mixed-use project, and we wanted to work collaboratively with the commission and trying to find a solution rather than set up an adversarial-type situation. Mr. Maholland identified some concerns that the commission had expressed with the previous version of the mixed-use development regulations, and together, we worked collaboratively with him to develop the new mixed-use development provisions that we've submitted before you tonight for the CB zone. New provisions that would permit limited new construction, subject to much stricter controls than were in place previously. This zoning regulation text amendment has gone through a number of revisions. I think this is probably the sixth revision that's before you right now, and we've been doing that over the last half year, and we are very pleased to share it with you tonight. We believe these proposed amendments will allow creative and attractive mixed-use development opportunities to be expanded at select sites in downtown Niantic, but with the necessary controls in place to make sure that those projects maintain the character of the village and minimize any potential adverse impacts to surrounding properties. The specific text of the proposal, proposed amendment, has three parts, and I believe you have a copy of it in your package. First, in Section 9.2.3, under special permit uses allowed in the CB zone, the limitation on mixed-use development for existing buildings only, again, which was added a few years ago, would be removed, and that would open the door for such use in both new and existing buildings going forward. Second, in Section 9.3.1, we modify the lot size requirements for the CB zone to simplify them and make sure, to make sure that there's sufficient lot area to support mixed use. On our initial proposal, which we submitted, required mixed-use projects to have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Upon further review, we met with Mr. Maholland last week, and he asked us to clarify this section further, particularly with suggesting a small modification to the initial language that would allow mixed-use development for existing buildings to have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, but new buildings to have 20,000 square feet. So at this time, Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to pass out what I, what I've entitled, the possible modification for consideration. Just pass this out, and this has the original proposal as it sits tonight, and then the proposed modification as well. I think that's in your package, but you'll have it. You probably, you might have this already.
You won't have to dig for it.
But I'll, I'll give you one anyway.
Yeah, it's in there already.
Now, while my client was satisfied with the original proposal because it met their purposes, we understand that this regulation is not site-specific. It applies to the entire CB zone, including a lot of smaller parcels with existing buildings that still may benefit from mixed-use conversions. As such, we'd have no objection if the commission wants to adopt this language instead of what we proposed, following Mr. Maholland's request, and if you choose to use this language, you can modify your approval of the text amendment to adopt this specific language for this section. The third component of the text amendment is, and really, the majority of the meat of the regulation change, deals with the new controls for mixed-use development within new buildings provided under Section 25.5. In Section 25.5, we first lay out the purpose of the controls themselves, which is to, quote, "encourage the responsible development of Niantic Village in a manner that preserves village character, creates an attractive environment, and provides an incentive for mixed-use development." Then we also provide submission requirements. What do you need to submit to the commission with your special permit application? And this is loosely based on the previous standards that were in place, but it's substantially enhanced to provide stricter controls. These submission requirements include a site plan pursuant to Section 24, a traffic study for developments in excess of 15,000 square feet in gross floor area, and a full-blown architectural package for the development prepared by a licensed architect. This is, in my opinion, the most important provision in the controls, as the building, the elevations, the floor plans, and the materials for the project must depict a design and a building massing that reflects New England village character, and it must be compatible with or enhance the surrounding neighborhood, or the application must be denied. The submission requirements also include all items required under your existing site plan and special permit regulations, as well as any other information that the commission may reasonably require to evaluate the proposal. Finally, we provide for 11 additional specific controls on mixed-use development for new buildings. Again, new mixed-use buildings require 20,000 square feet of lot area to make sure we have sufficient room to accommodate the mixed use. The residential density that is allowed is 2,000 square feet per unit, regardless of the number of bedrooms per unit, which is, quite frankly, a more restrictive provision than, than was previously adopted. The number of bedrooms capped for each unit is capped at two, to avoid larger multi-bedroom apartments, which could be inconsistent with the character of downtown Niantic, or may cause issues with the provision of municipal services. We also restrict residential units on the first floor of new mixed-use buildings that would front or have direct access to street level. We want to maintain those building frontages along the street where, and where you can actually access a unit. We want to restrict that for commercial use. We want to maintain these street-facing areas, particularly for storefronts and that commercial activity. However, it's critically important to understand that the first floor, first-floor units would be permitted under this regulation, provided that they're at the back of the building, that they don't have direct access to the street, that they don't front on the streets. And this is really important because these first-floor units in new developments often can serve as the ADA accessible units for a project. And on smaller projects, where the costs are a little bit tougher to get a handle on, this can avoid having to put elevators in for ADA, and really can make these projects viable. So again, under this regulation, first-floor residential is allowed, but it can't be along any street. You can't have a door that accesses off to any, directly to any street. It has to be set back in the building, and again, we're hoping that that will encourage the ADA units to be located in those areas. Parking for these new mixed-use development buildings would be provided as required by Section 22 for the sum of the various uses, but the project, we note, can apply to the commission for a shared parking determination under Section 22.5, or it can even utilize on-street parking under Section 22.7, but we do limit that so that the on-street parking has to front on the parcel itself. And, and this ensures that the parking is immediately adjacent to the project, it's not down the street or in another part of downtown, and it's readily available for residents and customers. Now, I would note, I'm sure some of you heard about this, that Governor Lamont signed a bill this month that, by my reading, appears to prohibit, or at least drastically restrict your ability to require parking for residential uses. But going, but today, as of today, that bill is not in effect, and so this regulation would stand as proposed, at least until that becomes law. New mixed-use building height would be a minimum of two stories to create the desired streetscape in downtown Niantic, but it's still capped at 30 feet, which is the requirement in the CB zone. There is a provision that we've built in for extensions above that height, only in the commission's discretion, and again, solely for architectural features, perhaps to create an attractive New England roof line. As you know, downtown Niantic has a variety of one, two, and even three-story buildings. I think the Morton House technically might be four stories, but there's a variety of building heights right now. Under this regulation, all new mixed-use development for new buildings must be served by municipal water and sewer. And landscape and lighting, which, in my opinion, I think many of yours, is so important to the overall project aesthetics, must contribute to and be consistent with that New England village character that needs to be reflected in the architecture, and it must be designed to screen other properties as well and provide privacy. These types of projects by these regulations also have to be designed for a human scale. They need to focus on pedestrian connections within the site and outside of the site into downtown Niantic, and that really needs to drive the design rather than vehicular-focused design. We cap the buildings, any building under this regulation, at a maximum of 20,000 square feet in gross floor area, and that's really to prevent sort of Belton suspenders, to prevent even a proposal for a massive building that would be, quite frankly, out of character, in our opinion, with downtown Niantic. We do have an exception for covered parking areas to encourage that type of, of development if possible. And then finally, we place a 30% minimum on the commercial square footage in any new mixed-use development to make sure that the tail doesn't wag the dog, that there is that core of commercial use that drives the project. Similarly, we also have a cap of 50% of any first-floor space being used for residential use, again, to make sure that the, at least 50% of the first floor is dedicated to commercial, that you have that nucleus for the mixed use to be successful. As I listened to you read in the various referrals, the application was referred to the Planning Commission. I don't know if you have this in the, in the file, and if you don't, I want to make sure it's in the file, but this is the actual vote from the Planning Commission. I think you should have it in the file, but this was unanimously, the Planning Commission, on April 8th, 2005, found this text amendment consistent with the 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development. There was also the referral to CCOG, which had no comments, and then Connecticut DEEP, which only had that minor comment that was read into the record. I think Connecticut DEEP's concern about residential development in flood-prone areas is certainly a fair one. You cannot build residential below the base flood elevation by your flood hazard regulations. You cannot build residential below the base flood elevation by your flood hazard regulations, and certainly not allowed by building code either. I think that concern can be addressed at the special permit phase. If somebody had a site that maybe had floodplain on it, I know my client doesn't have that issue, but there are areas of the CB that do, and I think that can absolutely be addressed in your health and safety review in a special permit application. Tonight, I just want to conclude that I think there's a solid legal basis for this change. As I said before, your charge under the statutes is to determine the consistency of the proposal with your 2020 Plan of Conservation Development and your comprehensive plan for zoning. The Planning Commission obviously has already made a ruling or made a finding of consistency with that plan, and your Town Planner's Report that was also written to the record provided some detail on the consistency with several goals of the plan. I would just add a few more points that I think are worthy of consideration. The POCD directs this commission to continue to support actions that strengthen Niantic's downtown CB zone and encourage a range of mixed land uses, including both new development and adaptive reuse within this same area, taking advantage of the existing infrastructure that's there. The POCD also directs you to promote high-quality and historically compatible architectural design, and I think the design requirements that we have, also referring to Section 34, does that. And it also encourages you to look at various landscaping approaches to make sure to complement new commercial developments and the remodeling of existing buildings, and we have that provision in as well. New development should also include the establishment of new businesses in downtown Niantic in a manner that promotes cohesive, pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use retail service and residential uses in the same neighborhood. And then finally, the POCD talks about how new commercial development should be directed to areas like downtown Niantic, and it can be successfully integrated with multi-unit housing developments in mixed-use buildings, provided that first-floor commercial storefronts are preserved. In terms of the comprehensive plan, mixed-use development is already permitted in the CB zone, so, and it was once before for new buildings, so allowing it once again is certainly, again, once again with stricter controls now, is perfectly reasonable, and I think it's a natural extension of your current zoning scheme. From my client's perspective, I know Nick believes this text amendment is a measured approach. It's going to allow for new, attractive, and sensitively-designed mixed-use development in downtown Niantic, subject to a special permit and your review at the end of the day. Obviously, we're excited about being able to use this regulation to move the project that we have forward, but we also believe this might help other property owners in the CB zone. I know some of them might be here tonight to redevelop their properties and add new businesses and new high-quality housing to downtown Niantic. If you do choose to approve this regulation or a modified version of it, I would remind you to make sure that you set an effective date of the regulation in your motion, and I want to thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to remain available if you have any questions, and I reserve the right of rebuttal. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Before we go to the public, what questions does the commission have?
I have a question for H, the landscaping and lighting. Was there any talk about native plants to be used?
Yeah, I mean, I think most commissions now demand native planting. They also typically demand dark-skies compliant lighting, so those are things that I think is sort of standard now, but if that's something that you'd like to add, absolutely, we have no problem with that at all. It's nothing, I think every project that I work on now, we put only native plantings and we only use dark-sky compliant lights.
Yeah, but since we're talking about a proposed text amendment for the whole town, I personally would like to see native plants, something put in there about native plants. That way, whenever somebody comes forward, they already know what to expect. There's not going to be something that sprung on them, and in this area, and, you know, this part of Connecticut, would it be in a coastal town, native plants, you know, we all know how the importance of it.
I think it's a great suggestion, and as I said before, what's nice about the legislative discretion you have is you have the ability, as I said, to approve, deny, or modify. So if you wanted to add that language to subsection H under Controls, you have every right to do so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there a building downtown that you can think of that's approximately 20,000 square feet? Just to get an idea of what you're talking about.
I think across the street, I think bigger, there's the Crescent Point Building that's across the street from it. That's bigger than 20,000 square feet. The Morton House is bigger than 20,000 square feet. You're probably talking a little bit smaller than SIFT, the SIFT Building. That's over that, I think, with the multiple stories. I know Mr. Sahin is looking at doing a two-story building, is what he's doing. I think his size, based on the, sort of the concept plan we have right now, is just under, it's just about 6,000 a level, so it's about a 12,000-square-foot building.
Okay.
One of the things working with Bill is, we realized that this regulation would apply to other properties, and it could apply to assemblages of properties as well, and so we wanted to make it supple enough that it could be used elsewhere. At the end of the day, though, regardless if it's a 2,000-square-foot building or a 20,000-square-foot building, you still have to meet the architectural standard, and I think that's what's really the most important thing. But I see the 20,000 cap as sort of belts and suspenders, so if somebody doesn't come in with, maybe buy up a whole bunch of properties and put some huge, long town, rowhouse-type of development or strip center-type development, I think you would stop then anyways because that's not New England architecture. But it just sort of, like I think Commissioner Jett Harris says, make it very clear upfront, we're not looking for massive buildings.
Thank you.
What is New England village architecture?
Yeah, so, it's, I think in New England village architecture is a pretty well-understood vernacular in this area, with certain rooflines, the addition of dormers, certain materials like clapboard, certain types of windows like double-hung. Working on projects throughout this region, many towns are asked for that, particularly in their sort of seaside areas. If you want to add some additional language to that, you can, but it's a vernacular that I think is pretty well-used and known by architects locally.
It's around section 34.
And we also point to section, I think, maybe you said it, I couldn't hear you, but we also point to 34, which has your defined standards, and so, consistent with the statutes, we didn't want to just say New England village character, we wanted to point to specific standards that already were in your code, in which I know, having worked with Mr. Mahalan for 20 years, he enforces quite rigorously.
I have another question, too. Part, number three, part B, residential density, 2,000 square foot per unit.
Yep.
But this thing, it also says on the other, the front of it, another page that, it'll encompass, because it gave the square footage of the efficiencies, one bedroom.
Yeah, I can explain that. So the original submission in March tried to mirror what you had in the regulations before they were removed, I think in 2002 or 2003, and I had, to be, for fidelity to that, I had included that. Mr. Mahalan properly reminded me, I think in April, that the state legislature passed a statute within the last couple of years that says that it's illegal for zoning commissions to require minimum unit sizes that are below what our building and fire code minimums. So those requirements are actually unenforceable under the current statutes, and so we removed them in early May at Mr. Mahalan's request.
I have another question, too. Sorry.
Yeah, what?
Actually, I'm not sorry. On F, it says that, what was the, because I don't have it in front of me, and you might know quicker than I will before I have to look it up, because I don't want to misspeak. Number F, it says, the part where it gets to 10 feet above the 30 feet.
Yeah.
What is, what is it now?
It's 30 feet in the zone right now, but I'll let...
No, I know 30, but what about the 10?
If you look in my memo, it has that information in it. I think you have it right there.
I think it's just for ornamental architectural things.
Yeah.
I know, but what is it now?
I think section nine.
What, I'm sorry?
It's 30 feet.
30 feet right now.
Okay, so, I know, I understand the 30 feet, but it says 10 feet above. That's the part I'm concerned about.
So the idea is, is that right now, the maximum is 30 feet, but you could, under this regulation, with the commission's permission only, you can go above that maximum with an architectural feature or to establish a roofline or to create that New England character. So it gives you the ability to allow somebody that has a really creative design that's beautiful, that actually fits in, that might be at 32, 30 feet or 33 feet. Sometimes those hard limits shape the design and create bad architecture. And so the idea was here, is if somebody came to you and said, "I've got an amazing design for a 32-foot building, because I have a two-foot projection," or "I have a three-feet projection for a cupola," or "a spire," or "a roofline that really looks attractive," you would have the option of approving that because it gets you a better product at the end of the day.
Right, but with the 10 feet in there in addition to the 30 feet, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is, you know, we're talking potentially almost a 40-foot building.
It's not, it's just like, it could be only a one-foot wide thing that goes up a foot.
Oh, I know, but even though they put the architectural stuff in there, it's still going to be that high, the total completed project.
It can be, but the intent here is not to have a 40-foot building. It's to have a 30-foot building with some, I would say, gingerbread or some feature that allows you to go a little above. A lot of towns have this simply to promote good architectural design, because I've been in so many projects where an architect comes to me and says, "I have this great design, but I've got to change the roofline because we have this arbitrary number, but the building would be so much more attractive, and it would fit so much better if I could go a couple more feet and change the pitch."
Right.
At the end of the day, if you, they have to ask your permission to do that. That's how this is written.
Okay, but I still want to know, what is it now?
30 feet.
No, I know it's 30 feet, I'm looking at the 10 feet. I'm just questioning the 10 feet, not the 30. It says here, "to extend no more than 10 feet above the 30-foot maximum." So if they have an architectural roofing, they can, like you said, they can go, they're going to go 32. So was that number 10 changed in here, the 10 feet? Was it five feet before? What was it before?
It was 30 feet, so...
It was just 30 feet. It was like, it was like at 30, you can't go above that line.
Okay, so then what, so what, I'm still not understanding, I'm going to have to keep asking questions, I'm sorry, someone needs to explain it to me.
Sure, I'll try to.
Because when we're talking about changing the height of buildings that are in a condensed area like this, people want to know what exactly can they expect, because then what happens is, is if we don't, if we shoot it down, then we can expect a lawsuit. That's what's happened. So I want to know, when it says here, "permit architectural features to extend no more than 10 feet," so is that included with the 30, and what was it before? Because this is a change.
So originally, if I may...
Yeah, go ahead.
Attorney Sweeney, originally, it's 30 feet.
With no ability to go above.
This proposal is allowing an extra 10 feet, subject to the approval of this board for architectural purposes, so it could be, it could be 32, it could be 34.
Or it can be 40.
It could go to 40, but it would be up to this commission. You could say no. And it gives some design flexibility, but this board can...
The only thing we'd be entitled to is 30, if that answers your question. We would have to...
Yes, I understand what we're entitled to, but, and I'm okay with that, I get that. What I don't, what I have a question about is the extra 10 feet on top of the 30, and it doesn't matter if it's architect, it's still going to be blocking everything. Some residents might think...
It's more like in the area of a cupola.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or I don't know, it's not another floor.
Correct.
I know, I know, but it's still going, it still potentially can block...
Only if we would approve it.
Yeah, and so, and remember, it's a special permit, right?
I understand.
And it's a design feature that I've laid out here. So let's say, let's say I come in with a building that's 30 feet, but I have a cupola on it that makes it 34 feet, and you look at it and you assess it, because it's a special permit, you look at it on a case-by-case basis, and you look at it and you say, "In this location, Attorney Sweeney, that cupola looks great on the building, and it doesn't block any views, it doesn't detract from this surrounding neighborhood, I'm fine with it." But then I try to do the same building at a different location, and you look at it and you say, geez, again, case-by-case review, that doesn't look right in that place, and it does block a view, or it's an important view corridor for the public that you're now blocking. You can have your 30 feet, but take the cupola off. You can say that as well. So all it does is it puts the, it puts the final decision in your hands, what it...
I understand all that.
Yeah.
I need to know what it says in our regulations, Mr. Mahalan. Is there a 10 feet above 30 feet? Is that terminology in our...
No.
No.
Okay, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
It's not in our regulations, this is a new proposal.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I was clear on that. So there was no foot above the 30 in our current regulations. That's what I'm asking.
Right. And if you were uncomfortable with it, Commissioner Jett Harris, you can tweak and add things, you can also delete it. So if you were like, "I like this whole regulation, but I don't like that," take it out. I mean, if that, at the end of the day, if that is what it's going to take to get it over the finish line, we'll work with you on that. The reason I put it in is, I'm a big believer in allowing flexibility in regulations subject to the discretion of the commission, because it allows people to have a vision and come forth with something beautiful. I've been doing this for 25 years. I've had many, many times where I've had to sacrifice the architectural appearance of a building to meet an arbitrary zoning standard. And I have architects look at me and says, "Well, if I had, if I had two more feet, I could have made this building look a lot better." I like that. I like the ability to sell it to you, and if you say no, so be it, but give me a chance to make the argument, and that's why it's here.
Thank you. Very much. Any other questions?
I had a question.
Oh, do, yeah.
Attorney Sweeney, and thank you for answering the question on the New England village character. It's something that, it's not defined, but you know it when you see it, and I know, geez, 15 years I've been on this board, Mr. Mahalan's worked really hard to get that, and it's, it's one of those things that I think we've done a good job in town, in the town of Swis because of it. So thank you for addressing that.
Yeah, and there's a common thread in East Lime, which other towns don't have. I mean, you go from Flanders all the way down to Main Street, there's that common thread in so much of the architecture, and that's why people like Niantic. I wanted to make sure that that was written in the regulation and citing back to the authority in Section 34, because I think it is so important. I think some of the concerns that people had about the old regulation was that it wasn't spelled out that that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, and I know we have a lot of questions about that, but it's worth the effort because it is important. I did have a question, though. It's in, it's Section D, number three, and it just helped me out with this.
Sure.
It says it may, residential may be on the first floor, but then the next one in Section F, it says, but they must be two stories.
Mm-hmm.
So hear me out.
Sure.
Because then in Section K, it says, "commercial use, no less than 30%." Why require two stories when maybe you could do residential in the back?
Yep.
And commercial in the front with a one-story building?
Yeah, that's a...
I was asking about the two stories.
That's a great question, and in fact, it's something that Mr. Mahalan and I talked about at the end of last year. One of the things were, that, one of the intents here is to create a streetscape that has some verticality, because that verticality creates variation. There are single-family, single-story buildings on downtown Niantic streets. I think they're actually the minority of buildings, but there are there. The problem, I think, with that is there's a lack of sort of the activity above, the vertical interaction between residences above retail. So we added the minimum to create a verticality to the streetscape, some more variation and interesting view, like an interesting vernacular. It's really an architectural issue, I think, so that when you're driving down, you can see something interesting there. Single-story buildings, it's harder to do the architecture and have that be that New England character and make it work. So, again, this is something that you can tweak. If you want to allow single-story, you can take that minimum two-story out. I think it's a good thing, because I think it's going to create buildings that are more attractive and fit in, rather than a single-story building with a storefront and then residence, apartments behind it. I just, I don't think you're going to get the kind of building you want that looks like it fits into Niantic doing that. And that's, it was sort of like something that we worked on iteratively, and we thought, you know, that would make sense. And the reason we have 30% is because you can go, you could theoretically have a three-story building, there's quite a few three-story buildings, you want the bottom to be first floor.
Right.
And so 30%, about a third, and that was the idea. It's very hard in this market to find tenants for second- and third-floor space, commercial tenants. So the 30% sort of comes from a three-story building with two stories of residents above a single story of commercial. So that's the logic or the rationale behind it.
Yeah, no, thank you for explaining, I appreciate that.
But I would, I would stress, allowing some residents on the first floor is really important, because if you don't do that, you're going to have to put elevators in every building, you know, in any kind of new building, and that's going to really be a difficult thing. It takes up space, increases cost. I've done a lot of buildings now in sort of urban and suburban downtown areas, and having those ADA units on the backside of a building can be really, really helpful.
I had some relatives move up from Florida where it's a lot of single-story living, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because I understand there's...
Well, and there's... Well, and there's, and if you look at the demographics for East Lime, this is a community that's aging. And so you have people that have mobility issues, and you wanna make sure that you have easy-to-access ADA accessible units.
Thank you.
No problem.
I would like to inquire as to if this project were to be approved, when we would plan to begin construction?
This is a text amendment, there is no progress.
Yeah, it's not site-specific.
There's no construction plans, actual plans at this time.
There's only conceptual, and it's, it's technically inappropriate to talk about a specific project when you talk about a text amendment, because this will affect all of the CB zone. But certainly, I mean, I'm being fully transparent, the reason I'm here is because we wanna come back to the commission with a project. We have a concept design for a project, it would be a mixed-use building with commercial frontage along Main Street.
I understand.
Yeah, and, and so, our hope would be is if this is adopted by the board, we would, then Mr. Sahin would feel comfortable enough to expend the significant amount of money with engineers and architects. And we have those people ready to go to actually design the building, we would meet with Mr. Mulholland, we would, just like any other project, we would work through all of those issues before we formally submit, and then come before the commission, get our approvals, and then ultimately, you know, it's a little early to give you a construction timeline.
The only concern was that there would not be anything undertaken during the summer season. We worked very hard to attract people to come into town, it's very important for our economy, and I would not want to see any disruption of any type of construction.
Mrs. Hardy, I'm gonna have to interrupt you, I'm so sorry. This is not the part of, you can say that, but this is not the time right now.
Okay, but I'm the examiner.
I know, but it's still not...
So I'm entitled to that as a commission member, so that's it.
Let's just, okay. Any other commissioners?
We respect the town, and we'll certainly work with the town.
Any other commissioners have questions before we go to the public? Okay, is there anyone from the public here tonight that wants to speak for the text amendment? Yes, sir? If you could come up and state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Lefterio Saropoulos, and my address is 43 Sniffen Road, Westport, Connecticut. I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm the owner of Skipper's Seafood Restaurant, and I also own four parcels in the CB zone. I support this, I'm also very, like, you know, when I go and I meet people and I tell them I live in Nyonic, East Lime, I get excited, and they get excited, because all of the architecture that we've done in the last couple of years with the help of Mulholland, I've been there for 20-something years, and it's changed in a very positive, good way. And I would like to continue that. And by supporting the text amendment, I think we, I think it's a good thing for the town. I don't think it's specifically for a project, I think it's good for the town. We really need it. As a business, it's good to have other retailers and other businesses, even if it's other restaurants. It works out best for the community. They, one day they come to me, one day they get upset at me, they go see someone else, they come back. That's just how it works. It goes round and around. To be honest with you, the 20 feet or 30 feet, I think is a little light. I think we should be able to go to, you know, two and a half stories. But that's just my opinion. I think that it would become a problem if it disrupts somebody's water views, or like, something like that. But that's just my opinion. I think that we really, really need this text amendment. When I meet with people, sometimes I've met with an attorney, because we own these properties since 2006. So sometimes we kick some tires and wanna get some information about redevelopment. Some of the attorneys aren't really too happy about doing business with East Lime. You know, I just get that negative vibe. And in a good way, it's a good thing, and in another way, it's not a good thing. And I encourage people to do business and to do things especially, it's a great, it's a great. And I think it would bring great future to East Lime and Nyonic Village. One of the things that I wanted to touch on is I'm grateful for the architectural that goes into a lot of the design in the buildings. I'm not looking to put up just a box. It needs to, it's essential for our town, for our landscape, to be New England-themed. And I think we've been doing that. I don't really see anything out of character, and, and like Attorney Sweeney said, from Flanders all the way down, I think the city hall is the only building that needs a little bit of a facelift. But we're not looking to put that burden on the taxpayers. But, you know, I'm not looking to ruffle any feathers, but I think it's essential for us to have it. I really do believe it. And I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Thank you so much.
Do you have another building that you've done in town, or would this be one of...
So I own the building at Skipper's Restaurant, and then we also own another three parcels, 207 Main Street, 211 Main Street, 11 Grand Street, that are located next to the Morton House. And we eventually want to redevelop that. But we're not looking to just slap a building, and I'm not looking to go rabbit hole of 830G. So, you know, when I go meet with attorneys, the first thing they say, "You have no choice but to do this." And that's not what we're looking to do, we're looking to do things for the town, we're looking to do things for the right for the town. And I think the mixed use is essential, and I think two stories is, it's not a deal burger, but I think it's, it's minimum. And I mean minimum, minimum, unless you're taking somebody's water views.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anybody else have questions?
I think we're good, thank you. Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to speak for the text amendment? Anyone at all? Anyone here that wants to speak against the text amendment? Anyone that has a neutral comment?
Hello, Jason Mazali, I live at 24 Jaris Ridge Road. I'm neither for nor against it. I grew up in this town, and it is a great place, and it's great to see people coming from Westport and other parts, investing in the town. My biggest concern is, what she's addressed, or they've talked about, is the architectural view and the size relative to the parcel. So, I know we're not talking, we're generally not talking about a specific application, but we are. And he referenced the building being approximately 12,000 square feet, but he's asking in this text amendment for 20,000 square feet. A 20,000-square-foot building is large, no matter what you do architecturally. However, I do feel downtown Nyonic does need to be developed. So I know I'm not giving you specific information, but I'm just trying to give you guys some concerns, knowing that we do a lot of development in town, how to do it the right way, and that's really just the most important thing.
Thank you. Any other comment tonight? Ms. Tony Sweeney, do you have any responses?
I appreciate the comments and, you know, of my colleague as well. I would just remind the commission that we've kept this as a special permit use, and so that you have heightened discretion in reviewing special permit applications that come before you. And you can look at things like architecture when it's defined in your regulations, and it cites your Section 34, which provides actual examples and standards. So I think, bottom line is, you're the gatekeepers of what is good development and, and what fits into the fabric. And I think that's okay, I think that's how it's supposed to be. And I think it allows people to be creative and to bring forward designs to you, and you can say whether it fits or not. And that's what this is really written to do, it's to give you the widest discretion as possible, but give some flexibility to property owners as well. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was, the guy before you, I was trying to get his, did he have a recommendation? Only because I was reading a proposed amendment, and it says, it's a minimum of 10,000 square feet, but two families are 20,000 square feet. So I was just, I didn't wanna be confused on that.
I think he was talking about building size, not lot size, but maybe, maybe I misunderstood.
It's only two families that are 20,000 square feet, right?
A new mixed-use development, a new building, you'll need a 20,000-square-foot lot. If it's a new building, that's how much land you'll need. But an existing building, based on Mr. Mulholland's suggested modification, if you have an existing building on a lot, you only need 10,000 square feet to make it mixed use. That's the proposal that's before you. I would just say, if you're intending to close the public hearing, just remember, you can't ask me questions after the public hearing is closed. So if you have any questions, I'm here now, I'd love to answer them. If you have concerns or things you don't like about the regulation, or if you, things you don't understand, ask me now, or, because I can't talk to you after the hearing's closed.
That's true. Last call, any other comments or questions? No, no, no.
Thank you for your time tonight, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Did you say that? Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstain. Hearing's closed. Thank you. Next on our list, we have the application of Greg Landers for site plan review and special permit for mixed use for tear-down and rebuild of existing barn on property located at 132 Boston Post Road, East Lime Assessor Map 31.1, Lot 6.
We'd like to open and continue. We've, the applicant is looking to do a revision to his proposal, so he'd asked for a continuance to our next meeting.
Okay, so he's not ready. Do I have a motion to continue?
I make a motion we continue, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think Mr. Foley would object. So five, and one extension. We just voted to continue this one because he wants to modify it the next time. So we'll move on to application of Nuno Amorall for Domino's Pizza for special permit under Section 8.2.7, fast food of the East Lime zoning regulations for property located at 170 Flanders Road, Nyonic Assessor's Map 26.3, Lot 11, which is the Midway Plaza, just FYI. We have a memo from Mr. Mulholland, if someone would want to read that.
East Lime Zoning Commissioner from William Mulholland, zoning official, special permit application, fast food restaurant, 170 Flanders Road, June 17, 2025. The applicant, Nuno Amorall, Amaral?
Amaral.
Amaral, thank you. Has applied for a special permit to operate fast food restaurant at the property referenced above. The restaurant, Domino's Pizza, is permitted under Section 8.2.7, subject to a special permit under Section 25 and site plan under Section 24. Parking must be provided per Section 22 of the code. The applicant is proposing to occupy an existing 1,560-square-foot space in the southwesterly corner of the building in the Midway Plaza. The majority of the unit will be off limits to the public and will be used for product preparation. The public will be limited to a small takeout area consisting of 156 square feet in area. The parking requirement for the original space would be 1,560 gross floor area divided by 250 square feet. Section 22 parking would be 6.24 or 7 parking spots. The parking requirement for fast food would be one space per 25 square feet of public floor area, which is 6 feet by 26 feet, which equals 156 square feet divided by 25, is 6.24 or 7 feet. Therefore, the application would conform to the parking requirements of Section 22 of the zoning code. The special permit application requires compliance with Section 24 Site Plan. While the site was developed many years ago, it substantially conforms to today's requirements. In conclusion, the applicant is here and will give a brief presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and present now?
Hello, thank you for having us today. We, I've never done anything like this before, so bear with me. But we are just applying to be allowed to have our Domino's Pizza in Midway Plaza. I don't, if you have any questions?
Could you go over your hours of operation, how your product is brought to market?
Sure.
Is it prepackaged, is it heated at the facility and then sold, and mostly takeout and delivery, is that correct?
Yes, so our business is all takeout and delivery, there's no dine-in whatsoever. So we're gonna have a small lobby for people, if they order, they can sit and wait for their pizzas. But, and we open 10:30 till midnight, seven days a week. Domino's only allows us to close two days out of the year, actually, three days out of the year, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. We have food delivered to the store three days a week. It gets put in our walk-in cooler, and then our employees, the dough comes already pre-made, all the food, the toppings are pre-cooked, so no raw materials whatsoever. We make everything fresh to order. We have a conveyor oven, it goes in one end of the oven, comes out six minutes later, the other end of the oven. And then either you can pick it up, or you can have it delivered, so.
Could you talk about your delivery service?
Yeah, we, like, so we, we open at 10:30, so we start delivering at 10:30 up till midnight. We do have to, we can only hire drivers that have two years' worth of driving experience. All drivers, we do a background check on and a motor vehicles report check on. So Domino's has certain standards that we have to follow to employ delivery drivers. So they can't have more than two violations in two years, or three violations in three years.
How many employees would you have per shift, and what do your shifts look like?
So we usually do two shifts, well, we have a lunch shift and then a late-night shift. Usually, our lunch shift is from 10:30 till 4 o'clock, and we'll probably have one insider and one or two delivery drivers, depending on the volume of the business. And then at night, we'll have probably two insiders and four to five drivers Monday through Thursday. Fridays, obviously, Friday, Saturday, Sunday are busier times of the, the week. So we'll probably have four insiders and probably eight drivers, hopefully.
So roughly about three employees there, drivers and people that work inside?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulholland, they would have roughly seven parking spots that would go with them?
Yes.
My question, will your landlord designate certain spots for the delivery cars, or...
He has given us two specific spots for our customers, not for our delivery drivers. So, but there's plenty of parking in that plaza for our delivery drivers.
Yeah, I think anything that gets more foot traffic, it seems like it's all takeout, so...
Yes, it's all takeout.
Anything that gets more foot traffic, traffic's gotta help the other businesses in there, so.
Yeah.
Are there residential units that are up in the Midway Plaza? I know they had a fire and some of them weren't there, so...
There are some, yes.
What do you, how would you plan to handle noise, like, if you're open till midnight every night, right? Is that what you said, or was it...
Yeah, midnight every night, yep.
Okay, so you wouldn't be getting any deliveries, like, at nighttime?
No, no deliveries at night.
And no weekends, is it during the weekend?
No, so, well, I don't know, the corporate will have to decide when our delivery days are. But our New London location, well, actually, all of our locations other than Uncasville are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And Uncasville is Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday for deliveries.
So there'd be no deliveries in it at late hours at night?
No, no.
Good questions, anymore?
Yeah, I know a while back, it could have been, I don't know how many years, confirmed to me that, or to us, that this has changed. I recall Domino's promised delivery within a certain number of minutes.
Yeah, that, that no longer is allowed, no.
Good question, nor good question.
No, we've gotten rid of that over 15, 20 years ago.
I thought so.
Yeah, no. There's no guarantees.
That's still waiting, are you waiting?
She was 25 when she ordered.
We do try to get it there as quickly as possible, but no guarantees any longer.
Are you gonna be doing all of East Lime or just Nyonic, what are your frame of...
Um, so Domino's corporate gives us a radius that we can deliver to. So we will be doing all of Nyonic, most of East Lime. Parts of Waterford will be going over the bridge right up along the river, so.
Do you do all of East Lime then, if you're gonna be doing Waterford? Take care of East Lime?
There are little sections that, yeah, there are little sections that we can't get to, but unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about that, that's way above our pay grade.
Wrong town here.
Yes. Yes. And we have to stay within a...
Five-mile?
Nine-minute radius from the location.
Okay. If the commission's finished asking questions, do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak for... that would like to speak for, for this text amendment? Against, neutral, last call? Okay. I think, I think we're finished unless we have any more questions. If someone wants to make a motion? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Zero, zero, we closed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you. Next on our agenda is the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for proposed text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulation, section 20.25, outdoor dining by modifying section L. The purpose of the change is to clarify the regulation. I would just like to add, since we brought this up, the purpose was to clarify our current regs, but since doing this, I've been reading like what other towns have been doing, and I personally would like to suggest we withdraw it and do some more research and homework on it and bring it back at a later date. That's just me.
I would agree with that too, because I've also looked at, you know, other, the way other towns do stuff, and I know people don't really like it when we say that, but it is kind of necessary when we're looking at our general area. So I would like some more time to be able to, you know, further look at this and give it another look.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I tend to agree with that because there are, there are some things that we can't.
Do you want to, does someone want to make a motion?
I do, I'm making a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept to continue.
Withdraw?
Withdraw. I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the current text amendment for the outdoor.
Dining?
Dining, thank you.
All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll withdraw that and do some more homework on that. Would anybody want to take a couple-minute break before we start the regular meeting? Oh, Sleepy Hollow, are they here tonight?
They are here.
I'm sorry.
So, but they are, Madam Chair, they're a regular meeting item. They were, they were last on our agenda, so.
Okay.
You have two other.
So we're, we're in between public hearing and regular meeting, so why don't we take a two-minute break? We still have quite a bit, so we're going to continue. We're opening the regular meeting with the application of William R. Sweeney Esquire, agent for Sahin Development Group LLC, for proposed text amendment to sections 9.2.3, 9.3.1, to permit mixed use development in the CB zone, subject to special permit with additional controls in section 25.5 of the East Lime Zoning Regulations. Who wants to start the discussion?
I think.
But didn't we continue the public hearing?
No, we closed.
We closed it. I just have something that I'd like to add. On H, I mean, I think it's a very good text amendment. I, I like it. I think that it would be good for the town. It also meets with the P O C D. I can agree with the planning's language on that, but H, I would like for native plants to be in there. That, that's a really big thing. Native plants and then on the part that I was speaking different language in and couldn't get it out, I would like the 10 feet, personally, it doesn't mean they'll get it, but I would like the 10 feet to be totally withdrawn out of there, since it is, it is up for architectural design anyways, and I do understand the 30 feet, especially we want to make something look nice and stuff, and we, we're doing that, and so I just would like to take the 10 feet out. That's just my fit on it. The rest of it, I absolutely, I liked.
I like the idea of the native plants and also, I don't know, about night sky lighting, but I think that, that would be at our discretion too. I have no problem personally with the 10 feet.
Yeah, I, I also have no problem with the 10 feet. I think what it is, is you hit that hard, that hard ceiling like we have now and people draw a straight line. I, I think you, you need to have that in there to say it's an option, because there will be some people that try to push it and they're like, ah, am I pushing it? But you, you need to give the people permission that the, because we really need to have this nice look and not a squared up thing. And, and our text amendment is 30 feet now. There is a reason it's in there and I, I want to keep it in there.
And how do you feel about the native plants?
I, I mean, you, you know, there's, there's new plants all the time. Native plants are great, but there are some really great colors out there.
I.
I have a hard, hard feeling on that one, Wade.
I, I am for the text amendment. I jotted down my reasons during the presentation. It does follow the plan of conservation and development, and the planning team did pass that six to zero. I'm also for it because I think mixed, to me, mixed use is really nice. You get, the town will get tax money coming in from the business, but then you also give people the opportunity to live downtown, which I think is, is good. If we don't pass it, people can go down the 830G path, and since we don't have a moratorium, we really don't have much say on what it looks like or the regulations or anything about it. So with mixed use, we have control of the size of the look. I think it would be better for our main street.
Would we still have architectural jurisdiction over that?
Of mixed use, yes. I'm talking 830G, we wouldn't. And if people can't do the mixed use and they want to develop their property, that's probably what, where they would go. I think it gives owners a chance to develop lighted buildings, you know, take them down, put something more attractive up. I think we need the 10-foot in there. If it just needed like one foot-wide element that would really set the building off to go up a couple feet, then they could do it. We can always say no. If you want to put native plants in, I'm fine with that too. I'd like to keep the 10 feet. That's about it.
Geez, I agree with everybody. I'm not, not sure I'm comfortable with that.
You never agree with all of us.
No, it's almost impossible to create a blanket regulation that's going to be appropriate for every parcel and every building in the zone. It just can't happen. And this is the second time now in about a year we've been given the opportunity to, to take back a little bit of discretionary authority over the design of development. Last time we turned it down. This time I'm glad to see it looks like maybe we're going to grab it. And that's in everyone's best interest for this board to actually have some discretion to approve things rather than just hide behind regulations that may or may not be appropriate. As far as native plants, I don't care. I'm not sure native plants particularly are, are, are betting was on a, on a, on a main street in a commercial district, I mean, but I don't object to it. And the 10-foot architectural span, I would eliminate it altogether and just say allowing architectural elements at the discretion of the board. But if 10 feet is the way you want to approach it, that's fine with me too. I'm good.
Mr. Pitt?
Um, frankly, I'm, I'm surprised. This board is about two years ago, after tremendous public pressure against what they call a monstrosity, and having another one built, which is about to be, construction is about to be, begin in downtown Niantic. We all, we, just two years ago, we felt that we wanted to preserve the first generation and now becoming historic buildings. Some of them don't look that great, but most of them, I'd say 90% are, in my opinion, worth saving. The planning board and the town planner indicate, they refer to the town, the P O C D. What the same group and official neglected to point out before, when we were writing the existing regulation, is that they actually said that this regulation will discourage affordable housing. Well, when you tear down two-story buildings with $750 a month apartments and rebuild with $2,000 a month apartments, that is discouraging affordable housing. And that is what this regulation will do. I know for a fact, you go up and down Main Street, Niantic, the older buildings, the second floors loaded with truly affordable housing. The other thing that the planning board neglected to mention is the three pages, chapter four, addressing historic preservation. You might read it. In the 35 years I've been on this board, I can, without question, without hesitation, say that that regulation that we put in two years ago, eliminating, tearing down buildings and rebuilding, was the most, received the most compliments. I guarantee you, I, I couldn't believe how many people commented. I just feel we're going backwards.
I.
This same board is reversing an opinion from two years ago.
I would like to add, two years ago, I, I voted, I didn't vote for the text amendment two years ago, and I, I received comments just the opposite. They couldn't believe that we had changed it. My biggest concern is, okay, if you stop mixed use, you can't stop a property owner from, what, tearing down a building he owns and he can build 830G. So would you rather have that or mixed use that you can control? Because I, property owners are wanting to do something with their property, and I think this is such a better option than the 830G. And with the new bill that the governor signed, I think that.
He didn't sign it yet.
He hasn't signed it, it may, but there are things in it that could come to pass. But I just think mixed use is such a better option. You're getting tax money for the town. You have control over what it looks like, the size. You know, if a property owner can't do that, they can go the route of 832.
If this passes.
It's a better option.
Excuse me, if this passes in 20 years, you will see nothing left of the original first-generation buildings in the downtown Niantic. And I don't care what you build, you can't build old. And it is these old buildings that still exist that add to the charm of downtown Niantic. The brand-new ones, they're nice-looking, but you can't build that kind of character that exists with these old buildings. And I, I just again mention the people, one after another, during the application for mixed use, tearing down the three buildings, including the, the restaurant, the six-family building, and the former Buckley appraisal building. A tremendous amount of opposition, opposition to that, and they referred to the SIFT building as a monstrosity. Person after person came up and said it. And we're going to hear it if this, if this regulation passes.
There's also the ZDM project too.
I agree, there were maybe 20 people in town that came up to the hearing. A lot of it was because they were afraid Cafe Soul would go away, but it actually improved their situation. Outside of this hearing, I've had lots of compliments. I've heard lots of people in town say they wish they'd do more like the SIFT. Thousands of people shop there, go there. What some people consider charming, and there are charming buildings downtown, other people, there are semi-sour standing there, and property owners want to do something about it, so I don't know. Any other comments? Are we ready to vote?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may, if you're voting and you vote in a positive, I would just ask that you include it as amended where he was going to include the language, all buildings, excuse me, and mixed use of existing building in his modification.
Would it be appropriate to just say with proposed modifications, or do you need more specific?
Well, I think you could say as appropriate with the proposed modification by the applicant to section 9.3.1.
We also need an effective date, and if you want to use native plants or not, or add the 10 feet or not.
The effective date, we can take care of, depending on what you choose to do.
If someone wants to make a motion either way?
Yeah, all right, I will. Move to approve the application of William R. Sweeney Esquire, agent for Sahin Development Group LLC, for proposed text amendment to sections 9.2.3, 9.3.1, to permit mixed use development in the CB zone, subject to special permit, with additional controls in section 25.5 of the East Lime Zoning Regulations, with, as discussed, modifi, amendments?
Modification to section 9.3.1. 9.3.1.
As Mr. Mahaland said.
That was just. That he passed out?
Let me finish making the motion. And also was modified regarding the requirement for native plantings.
Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Is that five?
Yep.
Five, all those against?
Foes.
It passed 5-1-0.
Madam Chair, published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time tonight.
I do.
Moving on. The application of Greg Landers, did we continue this one?
I have to continue.
So let's do the application of Nuno Amaral for Domino's Pizza for special permit under section 8.2.7, fast food of the East Lime Zoning Regulations for property located at 170 Flanders Road, Niantic Assessor Map 26.3, Lot 11. Do we have a discussion about Domino's?
People are really excited about it, especially, a lot of people are talking about the deals that they have. I, well, you know.
What you're ordering now.
I don't eat jobs, I'm in.
Hey, wait, be careful, I'm still waiting.
No, I, I think that, you know, with the cost of prices and stuff, and they have good deals, people are commenting that, you know, it's more affordable to feed their families some takeout food, and they like it.
Would you like to make a motion? I, I get the feeling you would.
Could someone make a motion?
You go right ahead.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the application of Nuno Admiral for Domino's Pizza for special permit under section 8.2.7, fast food of the East Lime Zoning Regulations for property located at 170 Flanders Road, Niantic Assessor's Map 26.3, Lot 11.
All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstain, it passed 6-0-0.
Madam Chair, published next Thursday, effective Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We went through the next application. The last one is application of Pauson Construction LLC for modification of an approved site plan to eliminate the access loop road to relocate the gazebo at the Sleepy Hollow Hills, Mount Tabor Woods.
Can I refer myself as an attorney?
No.
No, I can't.
No.
Well, I get to save a lot of money.
No one will believe you.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman. You probably all have this map.
No one will believe you.
I know. Well, my brother.
Don't tell me your name, go by it that way.
Okay. Wait, Lisca S., Lisca, you're, you're, alphabetically, you're next. Could you please sit for Mr. Pitt?
I'm sure, I think there's a memo from me to be read.
Pardon?
I think there's a memo from me, a brief memo, very brief.
Okay, who wants to read that? Are you tired of reading?
I haven't read it until.
You assume I can read.
He's sitting there.
I won't.
... Zoning official, proposed site plan amendment, Mount Tabor Woods, Sleepy Hollow, SUV Development, June 18, 2025. Jason Bizaglia, the developer for the above- referenced elderly housing project, has requested a site plan modification to eliminate a portion of the access loop road. He's requesting that the commission approve this proposal and allow the subject portion of the roadway to be roamed and ceded, to create a green open space area which then may be used as a recreational area. In addition, we would also like to relocate the small Nyannick gazebo from its original location to a site providing the proposed green space. Mr. Bizaglia is here this evening, and will give a brief demonstration of this proposal.
So, um. Excuse me, Mr. Bizaglia, can you do me a favor, please?
Sure.
Could you please say this to Mrs. Hardy, as she's our ex-official, I would like her to have that permission? She does, yeah?
Yeah.
I'll give it to her anyway. Let me back this up. So, this, this over here is the macro perspective of, of Sleepy Hollow Hills. It's Mount Tabor, Sleepy Hollow, it's an over 55 community that was approved, I think back all the way in 2004 originally, that started. And since then, the development is near completion, we have this last loop road here to complete, if you see this hatched area here? So, this is the area that was originally intended to be paved, but based on conversations with the homeowners associations, Mr. Mahalan, myself, and other people, we feel that it would be better to be left as a green space, not paved, and we are going to relocate the gazebo, which was originally located someplace over in this area here, and we're going to put it more substantially located here. This is also going to act as more of a, a walking trail, easier access to walk out through, you know, walk through the neighborhood. Pretty straightforward. Any questions?
The development is essentially 100% built?
It's basically 100% built. The last unit is complete, final touches, some grass, the punchest items that we're working through, the homeowners association, not items that we have to complete, but this is one of the big ones.
So, what was the loop intended to do in the first place, before you decided to take it out?
That's a great question. We don't, I actually don't know. I think it was, or maybe Bill would be able to answer that better.
Yeah, maybe. This goes way back. This has a long history of development, the original development, I wouldn't say it failed, but the market had, had collapsed to some degree after it initially got going, and, and so I think, Mr. Bizaglia, I think is, I think he's the second developer to come into this development, and the original designs were really based on the view of 20 years ago, which was, in today's view, is substantially different, and I think it was the best effort. The site was a difficult site, it has some rocky outcroppings, has some steepness to it, there's some flat areas, and I think everybody involved has kind of concluded that this full loop road is unnecessary, and it doesn't affect emergency vehicles, emergency access fire apparatus, et cetera, or access to the site. I know that delivery trucks find their way, Amazon will get there. So, it really is more of an inefficient design in today's world, and you certainly could argue the other side, but I think collectively, the homeowners association is on board, the developers on board, and from a technical viewpoint, they have to come before you amend the site plan, I don't have the authority to do that, so that's why we're here this evening.
Can you put some native plants over there?
Somewhere, can you give us some native plants?
Yes.
And some, some for the butterflies and stuff?
And the homeowner associations all on board?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And we did hear, no, no emergency vehicles, that's always.
Right. So, so really seriously, what is going to go in that area there that was part of the loop? You said grassy area.
We're, we're basically going to.
No, you're moving the gazebo, so.
Right, we're going to move the gazebo, we're going to, the area is going to be paved, we're going to put grass, we'll put some plantings, and we're going to put the gazebo there.
Paved?
No, no, it's, it's unpaved.
I thought you said paved.
It was originally supposed to be paved, but based on.
Right.
The design from 2004 originally, we just feel it would be better as a green space than to have all that additional asphalt to be taken care of.
I like, absolutely, I like the green space, and any kind of native plants or something, anybody wants to do that, a tree or two, something like that, would be nice.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That looks pretty straightforward to me.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept.
Approved?
To approve, and make a motion to accept.
Approved.
And approve the application of Paz and Construction, LLC, for modification of an approved site plan to eliminate the access loop road to relocate the gazebo at the Sleepy Hollow Hills, Mount Tabor Woods.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Six, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to be here, not so nervous.
I think I'm great boy.
Yes.
Landscape like my brother is.
We don't have any old business tonight, we don't have any subcommittee reports that I know of tonight. Yes, we do.
About the stop and shop trees.
Let's do the minutes first, if you don't mind.
He knows what I'm doing.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Sure, that's good.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The minutes are approved, and we have a question about trees.
Yeah, trees again. Well, because we've, I've been on zoning Board of Appeals for years, and then on zoning now, and we've, you've been trying.
In answer to your question, I received an email today, they will be installed by the 30th of this month.
Wow, good job, Mr. Mahalan. How many?
Not enough.
No.
But I like trees, no, I think.
Several.
I think 10, I think 10, but I'm not, I've got to go back and look at the plan. We had several plans and many long battles.
Yep.
And I mean long battles, difficult battles, but we've made some progress. It's not ideal, but it's better than what we have.
Well, public delegation, I don't think there's anyone left, but if there is hiding around the corner, now's the time for public delegation. Go and go and gone. Mr. Mahalan, what do you have for us?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Ms. Hardy?
I'm better.
Are you sure?
Yes, you are.
I'm better.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
I've got the good news about the trees.
All right.
So, we've had a long evening, and once you're done, I have, I can leave.
Okay, thank you. I did go to the planning meeting, they basically talked about two things. One was, they voted Mr. Sweeney, Attorney Sweeney's proposal, they voted on that, as you know, and then our friend attorney, Garrity, was there and spoke at length about a piece of property, I think it used to be part of Halfway Farms, it's up by Quell, what, the bird, Catbird Edition, or something, there's just a difference of opinion on if it's a buildable parcel or not, so.
In a nutshell, there's, there's some debate over open space and whether it's open space or can be converted to a lot, and whether they need a lot line revision or re-submission, and they're going round and round on that.
So, they discussed it at length and ended up tabling it to discuss some more. Ms. Yuhas, are you going July 8th to planning?
I saw that, we must.
Oh, thank you. I have no comment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.